Thank you. You know, wherever your distance, but you'll have a better shot of the screen if you sit back here. Just as far away from me as you can. So Melissa, we're going to flip the schedule a little bit to accommodate Dr. Ali Khan, who's joining us from UNMC. So the agenda, as you see it, will be kind of just flipped, so number two will be number one, and then number one will be number two. But you'll be first up under that after Dr. Khan.
Okay, perfect.
And I think we have your stuff all ready to go electronically, so that's good. And we're still talking about final apps on, is it the 16th?
It will be the 13th, will be at 11:59 will be the cutoff for the tenant to apply. And then we're going to keep apps open for another week, so to give time for the landlords to go ahead and do their portion. And then, so at 11:59 on the 20th, Sunday, the 20th, is when there'll be the cutoff for the landlord portion as well.
Okay, those are both Sundays?
Yes.
Oh, great.
Try to stay six feet away from you.
Do you want to sit here and then I can?
Yeah. Well, whatever you want me to do, whatever these, I'll sit over here, that's fine. Can I sit there if you're appropriate?
I can sit back there and you can sit up here.
Okay.
Oh, I'll take this thing.
So folks, now, we got a couple minutes to showtime. And we will be adjusting the published agenda. Everything on there will be addressed, it's just not going to be necessarily in that order. So we're joined this morning by Dr. Ali Khan from UNMC. In order to facilitate everybody's schedule, we're going to be doing that portion of the presentation first, which is actually number two on the agenda. And then, on the conclusion of that, we'll go back to regular order on the agenda, which is CARES Assistant Program updates. So we've got about one minute to go. And, good morning, everyone. I'm County Commissioner Jim Kavanaugh. And I'm here today as Chair of the Douglas County Board of Commissioners Health and Human Service Committee for our hearing on CARES Assistance Program updates and the 2021 COVID-19 Assistance Vaccine and Strategy Discussion. I want to thank you all for coming virtually. We've encouraged everyone to try to observe social distancing as much as possible. And so, as you can see, the conference room is largely empty, and that's intentional. I think that using Zoom is best practices from a social distancing point of view for these types of hearings. And I think that everyone should be able to interact. What we will do on the agenda is make an adjustment here at the outset, flipping, if you see the agenda, number one and number two, so that we will lead with number two, the 2021 COVID-19 Assistance Vaccine and Strategy Discussion. And we are fortunate to have for that as our main presenter, Dr. Ali Khan of the University of Nebraska Medical Center. Good morning, doctor.
Oh, he's muted.
Is everybody able to speak?
Got to unmute himself.
Okay.
He can.
Good mornings. Good morning, Commissioner.
There we go, very good. Thank you for being here. We are observing social distancing, as you can see. And we appreciate you zooming in from the UNMC campus to allow us to keep the spread of COVID to a minimum during these Health and Human Service hearings. I think that's important. We are looking forward to your presentation here this morning. And I want to thank you in advance for the excellent PowerPoint that you've sent to us. We will be posting that, and people can access it electronically going forward. But we want to make sure that people understand where we have come from and where we are now. So I, in introducing Dr. Khan, who, in addition to his roles as a dean at University of Nebraska Medical Center, is a retired assistant surgeon general, and I wouldn't be surprised to see him returning to a role like that in the new administration next year. However, he is recognized, I think, worldwide as a leading expert in epidemiology. And we're very, very fortunate to have him and his skills here in Omaha Douglas County, Nebraska, during this pandemic crisis. In March, when this really came to Nebraska, we had pretty much zero cases. The first cases came in, and between March and now, those numbers have just skyrocketed. So that in Nebraska, we have a total of 130,194 reported cases today. That's up from zero on March 1st. And 1,086 deaths attributed to COVID-19. And on December 1st, we had 907 hospitalizations. Nationwide, yesterday, I think marked a peak for deaths exceeding 3,000. So we've now entered a realm where every single day, the death toll comes close to equalling what we experienced on 9/11. And that's horrific. I'm going to turn this over to Dr. Khan to kind of give us an idea of where we are now. We've come from this zero in March to those numbers, and the 3,000 a day number nationally in terms of fatality. And where do we go from here? Because the pandemic is raging, the vaccine is somewhere off, and we need to understand where we are to understand where we're going. I don't think there's a single person on earth who is better informed to give us this overview than Dr. Ali Khan. And so I want to say again, thank you for being here, and take it away. Thank you, doctor.
Thank you, Commissioner, and thank you for the opportunity to the committee and the individuals listening today. Can I please verify that people can see my screen?
Yes, we can. We have your first page up there. And I think that the offices have coordinated so that as you go through, we'll go through.
Thank you, sir. So at your request, what I started with was the Douglas County dashboard to show you how cases have been going up in this county since the beginning of the outbreak, and how we have more cases now and more hospitalizations now than we did back in March when the disease was first identified. I usually prefer this slide has a better way to show you what's going on. Because at the bottom of the slide, where you see the red, orange, green, and yellow, those are our thresholds for when the disease is contained. So this is how I show people that the disease is far from contained currently within not just Douglas County, but obviously within the state also, with over 100 cases per 100,000 per day. And I consider containment at less than five cases per 100,000 per day. Let me use this as an opportunity to transition back to what's going on in the U.S., and then I'll drill down to where we are. Now, without a doubt, the statistics in the U.S., in Nebraska, and in Douglas County are grim. But I'd like to remind people that there are 1.9 billion people right now who wake up every day, go about their business with zero to no cases of COVID and without vaccine. And we still have the opportunity to do that. And again, with a little bit of positive spin, as we have vaccine, hopefully that will be another thing we can layer on to having fewer cases within our community. In the United States, worldwide, this is day 330 of the global pandemic. And this just shows you what I just said, which is that we have more cases, more hospitalizations, and peak deaths. Yesterday was a peak number, so essentially, two people are dying every minute in the U.S. right now of COVID. And despite these record numbers, we actually have less going on nationally in the way of mitigation than we did then. So for example, there's still 13 states that don't have a mask mandate. There's only seven states that are most, where their businesses are mostly closed. There's only two states that have shelter in place or curfew orders. So a very different response with fewer cases in the spring compared to what's happening currently in the U.S. A way to give this the Nebraska flavor is that every day, we have two full stadiums of individuals sick in this country. So that's a lot of people, no matter how you slice it and dice it. And unfortunately, the deaths from the current 200,000 cases will not be seen until seven days from now. So 3,000 is not the lowest number we're going to see. This is your data, this is your Nebraska data from the New York Times, which is my current daily source of what's going on. And you'll see, for example, how our cases are higher than they have been previously, what's going on with hospitalizations, and tragically, unfortunately, what's going on with deaths. This is a snapshot for the state to make the point of about 100 cases per 100,000 every day. And we, positivity rate of about 20%, you want this less than five. And we are nowhere close to having the contact tracing we need here within the state. And Nebraska is ranked fifth in the nation right now in terms of their average daily cases per 100,000. That is not a record we want here in Nebraska. This is just says fifth for 1,000. Now, there is, this should not surprise anybody, right? The underlying dynamics of this disease are unchanged. People are still getting together, which puts them at risk. We do not have the summer to save us, it's still winter, and people are coming together. And we are not using the public health tools that are available to us to get this disease under control. So potential collapse of our healthcare system and this continued increase in deaths, Dr. Redfield has projected 450,000 deaths. We are currently at 275,000, 450,000 preventable deaths by the end of February. These are the projections, this is not data, but these are the projections for Nebraska that's available to anybody if they want to see in terms of what's going to happen in terms of daily deaths here within the state, and what's going to happen cumulatively within the state. Not to make it too complex, but the green line is where we would like to be if we put all the appropriate measures in place in the state, including a mask mandate and a number of other activities to reduce community transmission, like getting enough contact tracers. So, and this may be a little, even this red line, which is potentially what's going to happen for increasing deaths in the U.S., may be a little optimistic because we beat this man, we meet, we beat these estimates by five days already in terms of number of deaths. And there's no doubt that the polarization and the politicization of this disease has made things very difficult to get this disease under control. Again, lots of other countries have gotten it under control. Many of you may have seen this billboard here, it's not about a virus, it's about control, which we quickly countered with something a little bit more informational, which is it's not about the mask, it's about controlling the virus. Our reaching out to our common humanity to try to save as many lives as possible. Let me end here with a little bit of an exit strategy, which is proven to be effective to get disease down. These are just pictures of good news, right? Vietnam, Taiwan, Australia, countries that celebrate what they call double donuts. And a double donut is a day with no cases and no deaths. So this is going on for about 1.7 billion people around the world, where they're celebrating double donuts every day. And again, we have the ability to celebrate these double donuts also here in America. So how do you get disease down? There is no secret sauce. It's, everybody knows the tools that need to be put in place to make this happen. So there's three things you need to do to get the disease contained and controlled. You need data-driven, evidence-based leadership that uses metrics around number of cases and deaths, and how well your strategies are working. You need to decrease transmission, that's your test, trace, isolate, and quarantine strategy. And then finally, you need to, your secondary strategy is engage your community around masks, social distancing, and hand washing. We are looking forward to supplement this with the true herd immunity strategy, not the herd, the herd immunity strategy of let's infect everybody, but the true herd immunity strategy of protect everyone with the vaccine. And I'll talk about vaccine in a minute, although none has license as of yet. So I was asked to suggest, what do these strategy mean in terms of concrete steps that could be taken at the state level to get disease down? So around leadership, it's using and improving our response metrics. Nobody in this state can tell you how many people are under quarantine, how many people are isolated, how many days it takes to isolate people, what proportion of our cases are coming from contact lists. You know, routine stuff that I used to do in Africa 20 years ago in response to infectious diseases, we still don't see those metrics here in our state. Here are four things we can do immediately to decrease community transmission. So discontinue in-person restaurants, bars, gyms, and houses of worship, unless you meet a threshold, until you meet a certain threshold. You would have to do this for about three to four weeks, and then cases would dramatically decline. Scale up contact tracing. Thought that people have been bantering around is can we rehire census workers? These are already people who have gone through a screening process and know how to interact in communities. Deploy a contact tracing application, which we don't have, to make it easy for you to know if you've been in contact with somebody. And then, why don't we have a prevention stipend to support isolation and quarantine? CDC has made our job easier by cutting down the time required for isolation and quarantine. But let's make it as easy as possible that anybody who needs to be isolated or quarantined, pay them. And say, here's half upfront, here's half in the end, please stay home. You know, we seem to have money to pay doctors and nurses, but doctors and nurses would be more than happy if they, if there were fewer cases coming into the hospital. So let's work on the prevention side. And then finally, on the increase in community engagement, having a state mask mandate would be helpful, that's enforced. And then obviously, the wonderful efforts by the governor and the county and the state around campaigns, around the personal responsibility part. But I always like to remind people that pandemics are not a function of a failure of personal responsibility. Also like to remind people that we do decide, it's not the virus, this is not destiny, the number of deaths in our state. This is, these are, this is a choice in the United States of what we do, because we know what tools, we know we have the tools that can get this disease down. Here's an example, a natural experiment in Kansas, where the governor had implemented a mask mandate, excuse me, a mask mandate that was overturned by her legislature. So it was a natural experiment to see what happens in counties that decided to stop masking and those that continue to masking. And you can see clearly, natural experiment, counties with a mask mandate had fewer cases, whereas counties without a mask mandate had a 100% increase in cases. So the data is pretty much unequivocal, that for a disease that's spread by talking, singing, and coughing and sneezing with somebody who's right in front of you, if there's a mask in front of them, those droplets are not going to make it, are less likely to make it to the person in front of you. Let me end with some good news. And this slide is not meant to be read, but that's the purpose of the slide, to make the point that there is numerous vaccines in Phase III trials. These are the large studies of 30 to 100,000 people to see whether vaccines work and how safe they are. So there are numerous drugs in Phase III trials worldwide. There's four in the U.S. currently, and a fifth one that's going to go online soon as a Phase III study. And we now know that two of these drugs, the Pfizer, the Pfizer and the Moderna drug have already gone to the FDA for requests for emergency use authorization. These vaccines were proven to be over 90% efficacious with a really good safety profile. And so our hope is that the FDA is meeting on the 10th and the 17th, I believe, that those vaccines will get approved, and vaccine will make its way out even here, even here into Nebraska before the end of the year. Now, CDC has come out with some guidelines on who should get vaccinated, and some goals of trying to decrease disease and preserve functioning of society. I love the ethical principles around maximizing benefits and harms, mitigating health inequities, promoting justice, and promoting transparency. So a safe and efficacious vaccine is important. But what's more important than a safe and efficacious vaccine is a trusted vaccine. So a vaccine that nobody takes is no good. And it's important that CDs, that the FDA is being duly diligent, and they're reviewing by hand all of this raw data to make sure that this vaccine is going to be safe and efficacious. And we need to maintain that transparency in everything we do so that our population can trust this vaccine. And promoting justice is so important. As you know, blacks, the indigenous, and people of color are three times more likely to get infected and two times more likely to die. So any effort to get vaccine out in our communities must respect these disparities and make sure we target vaccine first to those who are most at risk and most likely to get sick and most likely to get to die. The groups for this early vaccine that's going to come out, so there's about 20 million doses that are going to come out in the early vaccination, from the early stockpile in December and January. And that is slated for now, healthcare personnel and people in long-term care facilities will be the first two groups to get that vaccine. And then it'll be workers in essential and critical infrastructure, critical industries, and then people at high risk of COVID illness, people who are 65 years and older. But the plan, and what we have been told, is about 20 million doses for 20 million people. So that's 40 million doses, because you got to get vaccinated twice. And there's about 21 million healthcare workers in the U.S., and about 3 million people in long-term care facilities. So that's the first cohort that's going to get vaccinated, starting hopefully sometime in December, going into January, with the expectation that most people will be able to get vaccinated sometime this summer. And our hope is that we can go back to these large gatherings and be with you, Commissioner, at your table hopefully sometime in the fall. Now, I would like to remind people that just before we get vaccines does not mean we can stop doing everything. There's multiple things that we need to do to make sure, with vaccines being that last layer on top, to contain disease, get it controlled in our community, so that we have no more cases and no more deaths. As I said, you know, 1.7 billion other people have figured this out, and we too will get this done here in America. And sir, let me end at that, and I'm glad to take any questions or comments at your discretion.
Thank you, doctor. I have a few of them, we'll see who else, the media or other folks on the Zoom call might have. This is excellent, and it really helps us understand where we are and where we're going. It's pretty sobering. But in terms of the, what we should do, suggestions that you've gone over, it appears that we need to gather information to provide the numbers behind these metrics, information regarding testing, information regarding quarantining. You know, the counties are kind of on the front line of doing that through our health departments, at least here. In Douglas County, is that happening now? I mean, are we doing that currently?
So sir, you are very fortunate to have an excellent county health department. Dr. Adipur is one of the best local health officials in, not just in America, I would say in the world. And I've interacted with local health officials. So she's excellent, and she is monitoring this data for the county. And I'm hopeful that this will be more visible as part of this transparency, more visible to the public, so they can see how the response is going and feel more engaged in the response.
Thank you, and that's good to hear. Secondly, on that list of what to do is to decrease transmissions, you're indicating that we need to, it's kind of like resetting your computer. You needed to shut things down, unplug it, and reboot. And you indicated a number of suggested venues, like restaurants, bars, gyms, and churches. We have, you know, a lot of kids in school right now. What's the best practice for kids going to school? I mean, there's all kinds of different models being used right now.
Yes, sir, and you would see by my choices that my choice is to keep K to five in place and shut the bars, restaurants, gyms, and houses of worship. You can't, you can't keep everything open. And if you keep, if you close those, you're more likely to protect your kids and keep them in school. Because remember, it's, kids are, we are a little less likely to get infected and to transmit to others. But kids are surrounded by the teachers and staff and everybody else around them, who you also need to keep healthy.
Right, and I guess that's going to be a little bit of a concern because we're coming up on, you know, what would normally be the holiday break for everything, from post-secondary down to kindergarten. So a lot of these students are going to be home for the holidays, and that poses a challenge. Portion where you talk about the prevention stipend is something that we're looking at in terms of, we need to recognize a couple things. If we follow these best practices, and I think that we'd be wise to do that, there are going to be a lot of people who are out of work and are staying home to help us prevent the spread. Is that correct? That's what you're talking about, in terms of closing these venues and having people not be out in the bars, in the restaurants, in the gyms, in the churches, right?
So the prevention stipends, sir, I was proposing specifically for individuals who are infected and have been notified that they're infected, so they would have to go into isolation for seven to 10 days. And for people specifically who have to be quarantined because they have that contact with somebody. contact with somebody. So it would be for those individuals.
Because we've, you know, gone through a considerable amount of CARES relief money, and part of that is going to be focused on these COVID-impacted employment venues. You know, people in the food, drink, entertainment, hospitality industry have received aid already, and hopefully will be receiving more. The people that work there, the service people, have gotten some assistance through unemployment insurance, but this would be on top of all of that. And hopefully, we will get another CARES package to help stand up some of these programs, like we're going to be talking about in a minute, for rent utilities and other things, to help people who are out of work because of COVID. And you're talking specifically, especially the people that are infected, especially the people that are quarantined, right?
Correct, correct, sir. The goal here is to make it as simple as possible. If somebody tells you, you need to stay home for 10 to 14 days, that they don't need to worry about rent, gas, light, food, etc., that they, they get money right away and they know, okay, I don't, I will stay home, I can stay home. And then I had suggested you split it for the beginning and at the end of the period.
You know, that's excellent. We've actually had that in our family. And because of contact at the workplace, my wife had to quarantine. And I've seen this around the community where because of quarantine, the children are not allowed back into whatever daycare or childcare that they were in. So that kind of compounds the thing, and it tends to snowball. So that would encompass this entire period, that the folks would be out, even if it's for childcare purposes.
That, that would be a suggestion, sir. And I would leave the details to you with your expertise in the financial and the fiscal management side of the house. But yes, it's to make it as easy as possible for people to stay home.
The final thing is this mask mandate. And I've, you know, been proposing a mask mandate for Douglas County for months now. We've handed out free masks, and we will continue to do that. I think that's an ongoing initiative for the entire period of the, of the pandemic. But right now, if you look out over Omaha, Douglas County, and Nebraska in terms of the mask mandate status, what's your takeaway on that? What aren't we doing right? Because obviously, it's a patchwork of different match mask requirements.
Right, correct, Commissioner. It's a pat, it's a patchwork, and your city isn't a fortress that, the county isn't a fortress that people from other counties don't come and visit or, or transit through. So it's valuable to have a broad mask mandate with some degree of enforcement or reminders to say, okay, this is the expectation. To me, it's no different than a seatbelt, right? We don't, we don't encourage people to wear their seatbelts. We tell people, our expectation is, you will wear a seatbelt, and you will make sure your children are belted in every time you're in a car. And this is the culture we need to adopt, that this is something we do routinely, we're doing it for our neighbors, we're doing it to try to save lives.
Ideally, the governor would impose a statewide mask mandate, that is uniform, border to border. Is that right?
Ideally, yes, sir.
Okay. And I want to go back to the initial page that, thank you for compiling that on Douglas County itself, that indicates that we've had about a quarter of a million tests. There are about 550,000 residents of Douglas County, 41,242 tested positive, 20,496 of those have recovered, and there have been 343 deaths. At this point, on December 3, 2020, where would you estimate that we are in the arc of this pandemic here? I mean, are we going to see those numbers double? Or what's your, what's your estimate going forward?
Sir, we don't have really good data on how many people have truly been infected. So this is just those who have been tested. Obviously, anywhere up to three to eight times more have been infected and did not get tested. So the, probably a safe estimate is about 25% of people in Douglas County have been infected so far. So that leaves you about 75% more to get infected and die before everybody gets vaccinated.
So these numbers could indeed double or triple before the pandemic subsides.
Hopefully, hopefully not. As you know, I'd like, I believe in the power of public health and us coming together to keep these preventable deaths from happening. But yes, unless something changes, we will continue to get this clip of deaths here in Douglas County, in Nebraska, and obviously in the U.S.
And you know, that's really, I think, the takeaway of your presentation here today. Something needs to change. If we're going to avoid that catastrophe over the next six months, something needs to change. And the, what to do things that you indicated are the things that, that you think we should change in order to prevent the maximum amount of people getting sick and dying, correct?
Yes, sir. And those aren't just what I think. That's what the evidence suggests, based on numerous countries and even practices here in the U.S. There's a number of states that have done quite well. And up in Canada, there's actually the Atlantic, four provinces in the Atlantic coast have a bubble, their own bubble up there with hardly any cases. So even here in North America, we've figured it out.
Well, thank you for this, you know, clear and informative presentation. We are going to post this publicly. It's being livestreamed right now by the local media. And we hope to promote it countywide, citywide, statewide, in the coming days and weeks, so that we can get to the point that you're talking about. You've dealt with epidemics all around the world for a very long time.
Yes, sir.
At the end of the day, if we just go along doing what we're doing, and then everybody gets a vaccine shot sometime in April, May, June, does that stop the epidemic at that point? Or do we need to do these things, as you indicated on the 21st page, the multi-layer protection strategy? Is that a prerequisite for shutting the pandemic down?
So yes, sir. If we do these things now, we'll have fewer deaths and cases by the time people start getting vaccinated in the spring. So that's the reason to do these things now, to prevent the deaths now. And again, even when vaccine starts, everybody's not going to be vaccinated right away. It's not 100% efficacious vaccine. And we will need to have multiple layers in place to get this disease completely controlled and contained.
Well, thank you. You know, this is sobering, but it's better to know than not to know. Knowledge is power. And hopefully, we can take some of this knowledge and turn it into a public policy that will help protect our citizens from getting sick and dying in the coming months. But it's going to be a tough winter, that's for sure. And we appreciate you coming before us today. I wanted to throw this open to, there's media here that might have a question, and then there's folks that are attending online. So is there anybody from the media? Yes, go ahead. Identify yourself for the record, please.
Dr. Khan, my name is Catherine Garcia, I'm a reporter for KETV News Watch 7. I have a couple of questions for you. First is the point that you brought up about these marginalized groups, including black and indigenous peoples, creating trust within these communities, especially with the history of making sure these populations are vaccinated. Can you give some concrete details as to how these leaders can create this trust within these communities?
So thank you very much, Kathleen. That's an excellent question. And you picked up on the point that trusting the vaccine is going to be as important as the safety and the efficacy of the vaccine. So this is going to be an effort by the state in conjunction with the local health departments and the medical community, and setting up sites and starting campaigns to help people understand what the vaccine is, how to get it. It will be very important, and we're seeing this happen at the national level, to do this at the local level, is that people from all across our community come forward and say, I'm going to get vaccinated, to help reassure others to get vaccinated. And when we talk about our communities of color, it's important to recruit individuals within that community who are recognized and respected in our county, so that they too can say, I trust the vaccine, I trust the science from FDA, and get vaccine to help show that it is safe.
Yes, sir. My second question for you is, you know, you've pushed for this mask mandate for pretty much the entire duration of this pandemic. Are you frustrated at this point? And how do you feel in general about the fact that there is not a mask mandate in the state of Nebraska?
I think it's disappointing that Nebraska is one of the 13 states without a mask mandate, because the science is unequivocal that a mask mandate would save lives, no difference than the science is unequivocal that wearing seatbelts saves lives.
Yes, sir. Thank you very much.
And we have folks that are with us virtually on Zoom. Is there any question from our Zoom audience? I noticed that Commissioner-elect Maureen Boyle is there. Dr. Boyle, do you have a question?
I do, actually. Maureen has to do with the vaccine itself. I know it's a different type of vaccine than the typical, like dead viruses we see. How comfortable do you feel with the mRNA nature of it? Or do you have just any thoughts on the safety profile? The things I've read look really good, but I'd just like your opinion as well.
Thank you, Dr. Boyle. That's an excellent question. And you're quite correct, that this is brand-new technology with the first two vaccines that has not previously been used in a licensed product, which is why FDA has been extra cautious in looking at the safety profile of these drugs, and required that these vaccines at least to have, at least had to have four weeks of additional time after the second dose, to make sure that they can look at the safety. And needless to say, we will continue to look at the safety once it's deployed. But I'm, at this point, based on the data that I have seen, I'm very comfortable that these vaccines are efficacious. We know that about 10 to 15% are going to get sore arms. So unlike, and other sort of minor side effects, so unlike many other vaccines, you will know you have been vaccinated. But at this point, they do look efficacious, and they look very safe. And unlike previous vaccination, vaccine development projects, all of this has been available to the public. So it's unusual, unprecedented for a drug company to completely make its whole protocol available for the world to look at. And that's what we're seeing happening with these vaccines, again, to help reinforce the trust issue. It's, it's unprecedented that the, these meetings that'll happen on the 10th and 17th are going to be Facebook live, so anybody can see the deliberations of these external advisory groups. So again, I'm very confident that if the ACIP, and if, if the CDC and the FDA come out and say that this vaccine is safe, that it is safe, it is efficacious, and I will be ready to get vaccinated.
Thank you very much. I work as an obstetrician, and I know there's a lot of talk about whether to give it to pregnant patients, especially our nurses who are pregnant working on the front lines. And from what I read and some information from the Society for Maternal Fetal Medicine, they seem to think that it's, it's probably a good idea to get it. So I'm going to be first in line right there with you, Dr. Khan.
Thank you, Commissioner Boyle.
There you go, Doctor. There's your first testimonial from a community leader. So is there anyone else? Oh, Ben Salazar, Ben.
Good morning. Good morning, Doctor. It's so nice to hear all of the information coming from you, who is an expert in this field. And to some degree, though, it confirms the information you provided, the concerns in the, in the crisis that we're all faced together as a community, together. It's so nice to hear from the experts speak to this issue, because it confirms for, for many of us in the communities, especially minority communities, what we suspected is true, what we know is true. And for me personally, in South Omaha, as an activist, it's rewarding for me to walk down, which I've done the last several days in South Omaha, and see so many of my compañeros masked. Even the people on the street are masked. And Dr. Poor mentioned this a couple of weeks ago, that the numbers of positives, at least in the Latino community, have gone down considerably, with one exception being children. And we heard statistics that were rather alarming from one of the doctors on the panel, that in Children's Hospital, for example, the majority of the new patients among children were Latinos. And I found that to be alarming and, and concerning, of course, because there, there was no seemingly connection between what they were going through, the children, and, and the adults as a population for South Omaha, the Latino population generally. So I found that information alarming. But what, what is inferred strongly in your information and your commentary, by the way, you've been very polite about this, the politics, the politics, which is so befuddling to many of us, is that why the leadership, not just locally to some extent, but statewide, the governor hasn't taken the responsibility to say, okay, the doctors are right, the scientists are right on these issues, and what they are suggesting and recommending is correct. To protect the lives of my fellow Nebraskans, this ought to be done. And so like I say, your approach is more polite than mine. I am outraged that the governor has not taken these necessary steps, and may not take them at all. And so when you say you're frustrated by this, I can understand why you're frustrated. So, but, but really, just to say thank you for coming so directly on this information to our community.
So thank you, Mr. Salazar. And your points well taken. And there is the social justice issue, there is this clear discrepancy at who's at risk for disease. And we need to, need people like you to help the community understand that the vaccine is going to be safe and efficacious. And thank you for your, the work already in making sure people wear masks. But we need to be very equitable as we distribute vaccine back into our communities.
I, I want to also thank you, Ben, for the prominent role that you played in South Omaha, where I grew up, in getting the word out to our Hispanic community, which has been impacted probably worse than any other ethnic community in the state. You've done great work there. It looks like we are coming to an endpoint here. Is there anyone else? I'm sorry?
Luis.
Yes. Oh, Luis, please identify yourself.
Luis Jimenez, 3306 Bird Street. I am curious as to your experience, Dr. Khan, with information sharing, with these pandemics and the current pandemic. When there is a response, how much of a component, monetary component, is placed on countering misinformation?
Sir, I didn't completely catch your question. There was an interruption in the middle. Can you please repeat that, something about response?
Yeah. When you, when there's a response to a pandemic, how much of a component, monetary component, is assigned to countering misinformation and information sharing for the public? Because you mentioned how the vaccine that is going to be put out needs to be trusted. I'm wondering, who has to trust it? Is it simply the medical professionals? Is it the public? So that's what I'm asking. What kind of component is generally used for countering misinformation and information sharing?
So clearly, the best person to answer that would, oh, I see Dr. Poor. Dr. Poor is somebody from the state in terms of what their strategy is. But all of these campaigns have a strong health communication component, as we are currently seeing underway in Nebraska right now with the three Cs, or be big red responsible. But we need a strong component that includes the community members around health communication, to help people understand that the vaccine is safe. So you're spot on. It's not just about saying hello, show up and get vaccinated. You have to be very proactive to help the community understand why they're getting vaccinated. It's to protect them, it's to protect their family, what their expectations should be about side effects, and that, that this is a safe thing to do. So yes, you must make sure you budget for it, and you have a good risk communications, health communication strategy with the vaccination campaign.
Thank you. And welcome, Dr. Poor. Thanks for joining us. Actually, on that point, Dr. Khan, last week, the Douglas County Board authorized the health department to expend $150,000 worth of CARES funds on media, a media campaign, to do exactly what you're talking about. And hopefully, we're waiting to see the media plan on that. And hopefully, we're waiting to see the media plan on that soon. That will encompass some of what you're talking about in terms of finding local leaders to stand up and say, this is what we should do and this is how we should do it. And to do what sort of Jimenez indicated in terms of getting correct information out, as you have here today regarding the efficacy of these measures and the safety of the ultimate vaccine at the end of the line. I mean, we need to all together as a community stand up and, and help educate ourselves on what we have to do next to get out of this pandemic. I think you've given us a great game plan here. And it's just a matter of taking that knowledge and disseminate it in the community. It's incumbent on all of us to do this. Everybody needs to stand together on this. And thanks for taking the lead in getting this information out. And I think part of what we will do with the public campaign that we authorize the Health Department to engage in is exactly what you're talking about in terms of getting these points out and over and over repeating them, verifying them, validating them with community leaders stepping up. So thanks for leading on this. And I, I think that we've got a real good idea of the way to go forward. We're coming up on a little over 45 minutes. I know that you're a busy man. I, I appreciate all the time and effort that you've taken putting into this. And I look forward, as you indicated, to having you back later in 2021 when we can sit in this room together and talk about how we came through this as a community, as a state, and as a nation. Thank you very much, and stay well.
Thank you, sir. Mask, and mask on to everybody in Douglas County.
Very good. Thank you. Thank you, doctor.
Thank you, sir.
We will now return to the regular order of the agenda. As you see, it is the CARES Assistance Program updates. And we have rental assistance, utilities assistance, community and not-for-profit assistance, assistance programs, regulation, and the application discussion, and the future HHS CARES COVID assistance policy discussion. Those last couple will probably be discussed in the course of the decision, the discussion on the, on the first three. So we may not technically go to A, B, C, D, and E because we're going to try to save on time here. But I want to thank the folks who are administering these for us, starting with our own Douglas County General Assistance Department and our Director, Melissa Seawick, who is here with us today and has provided a PowerPoint update on the Rental Assistance Program. Good morning, Melissa.
Good morning, Melissa Seawick with General Assistance. I'm going to go ahead and share my screen with timing. I know we're running short. I'll kind of go through this pretty quickly because we presented last week. And with the holidays, we don't have a ton of changes. But let me get this. Can you, everybody see my screen?
Yep.
Okay. Okay, just a reminder, Douglas County CARES Rental Assistance Program is there to assist low to moderate income individuals or households that are at 100% AMI or below with unpaid rent due to a COVID-19-related hardship. And the maximum benefit for assistance is $7,000 per household. As far as the applications that we have received, we have received 5,761 valid applications as of yesterday morning. We have processed just over 4,100 applications. We have 805 applications that are in process. And we have 851 applications that we are currently awaiting the landlord response. I always like to note that a lot of times, folks just go ahead and reapply if they realize that they entered their landlord's email incorrectly. Or there's, you know, could be possibly some duplicate applications in that 851. As far as our approvals, we have approved 2,539 applications and just over $6.2 million in rental assistance has gone out into the community, which has assisted over 3,000 adults and over 3,500 children remain in their households during this pandemic. As far as denials, we have just over 1,500 applications that have been denied. Again, I always like to note, those are not unique households that have been denied. Those are applications. We have some folks that have applied numerous times. And due to their circumstance, that denial will stand. And then about 50% of those, on average, have reapplied and been approved for assistance. The denial rate in the majority, it's remained the same, insufficient documentation and we're unable to verify the financial hardship due to COVID-19, which is 82.7%. 14.4% is unable to verify the financial hardship due to COVID-19. So that's typically going to be where they had no loss of income at all throughout the year. So it wasn't, there was no hardship due to COVID-19. And then just under 3% of folks have applied that their income was over that 100% AMI. In this graph, you can kind of see that our denials have pretty much remained steady over the last couple of months, and then our approvals continue to go up. And again, if people are applying and they don't have everything that they need to, for us to process the application, we are reaching out to them to get that appropriate documentation. Or if there's any discrepancies, we're reaching out both to the tenant and/or landlord.
One second, I just have a quick question, Melissa.
Yes.
On the approval and denials, one, yes, there we go. Down at the bottom where you have 82.7% of the denials due to insufficient documentation and/or unable to verify financial hardship due to COVID-19, and the following one is 14.4% unable to verify financial hardship due to COVID-19. Those seem to be overlapping a little bit. Could you clarify that for me?
So with 14.4%, that is those cases that we've received everything we needed, just with everything that was submitted, that we did not see that there was a hardship due to COVID. With the 82.7%, the reason I put and/or is that we, they're labeled either the person was denied due to insufficient documentation, so we never got the documentation that we needed, or it's insufficient documentation and/or unable to verify the hardship. So they've kind of linked those two together. But they are separate. It's where we did not get all the information we needed. Therefore, we were unable to determine a financial hardship. The 14.4% is we have everything we needed to process the application, but we did not see any loss of income due to COVID.
I see. Thank you for that clarification. Go ahead.
And so this is just kind of a breakdown of the average rental assistance that was authorized. These numbers are going to be the same from last week just because our week starts Thursday morning, and I got all of this ready yesterday. So our average payment award per household as of now is just over $3,500. And the average weekly payments are just under $400,000 since November 3rd. With what we're seeing, our averages, knowing the applications that have come in thus far, we're anticipating that we will have about 75 to closer to 80% of what was allocated spent by the end of the year. So we are, I just wanted to present our closeout plan. And we're trying to stress to everyone who we talked to, different organizations, tenants, landlords, that the last day for a tenant to apply for assistance is going to be Sunday, December 13th at 11:59 PM. And that's when the tenant application will close out. And then we're keeping the applicant, the landlord portion of that application process open until Sunday, December 20th at 11:59 to give the landlord opportunity to get in there and complete their portion of the application. Our goal is to have all of our cases processed by Wednesday, December 23rd. But also knowing that, you know, some of these applications are taking some time for the landlord or tenant to respond. So we will continue to process cases until the last day possible, which is going to be Thursday, the 31st of December. Again, if anybody has any questions, concerns, wants more clarification, we have the Help Desk line at 402-444-7232, Monday through Friday, each until 4:30. And then we also have our website, which is the www.douglascounty-ne.gov. And we have frequently asked questions, an example of the application. You can apply there. You can check the status of your application on there as well. So again, key thing that we want everybody to know is December 13th will be the last time to submit those applications. And for the landlord, it will be the following Sunday, which is the 20th.
Thanks very much. Just a couple of observations. First of all, thanks for your update. You know, it's really come a long way. We're all on, on a learning curve on these things since earlier in the year. And this is really very, very, very informative. Thank you very much for the layout and presentation. It looks like if I take what you said, that we will have seven and a half or eight million of the 10 million allocated out to people by the end of the year. Is that a fair statement?
Yes.
And we've talked among the board about what we do with unexpended balances of assistance programs and other programs at the end of the year. And it appears that they will be lapsed into the general fund, which would allow us some latitude in 2021 going forward because those funds will be in our account to possibly extend some of these programs to bridge the gap. We're going to have a gap between the end of CARES on December 31st, 2020, and the Congress and the President authorizing whatever is next, CARES II for 2021. Because as you heard from Dr. Khan, the pandemic isn't going to end until well into 2021. As a matter of fact, it's going to get worse. So we need to anticipate the demand for rental assistance and these other assistance programs that we'll come to in 2021. And I just want to put this in the record that I will be talking, and I think my colleagues will as well, about using some of the unexpended, it looks like, two to two and a half billion dollars of this rental assistance thing in 2021, particularly in the beginning part, to see if we can bridge the gap. So we'll have more discussion on that later. I'm just putting that out there. I wanted to give everyone who's on the Zoom an opportunity to ask questions. If anybody has a question, now would be the time to raise your hand and come forward.
Commissioner Kavanaugh, this is Erin Fegstinger from Together 812 South, 24th Street.
Dr. Fegstinger, welcome.
Thanks. I, again, just want to commend Melissa and her team at GA. I know that they're doing the absolute best that they can to get this money out to as many people as possible. I also, just this week, a study was published from UCLA School of Public Health, Johns Hopkins, and Boston University, amongst others, tying evictions to a rise in COVID cases. When moratoriums were lifted, COVID cases also rose. So I want to make sure that as we're rolling this money into the next year, that we are devoting not just some, but all of it to continuing to support people as they try to stay home in order to stay healthy. As you said, the pandemic is not ending. And I just wanted to point that out because we're going to all be continuing to advocate for this money to go to help keep people in their homes into 2021. And I'm hoping that we can have another discussion since it will be, I presume, not tied to all of the requirements outlined by Deloitte under CARES, that we can talk more productively, hopefully, about how to get money to the people who need it. So I appreciate everyone's work on this and hope everyone stays home and stays well. Thanks.
Thank you. And I think you, you raised some good points there, doctor, in terms of.